Well, you have to look at the agenda first.
In looking at the agenda, we have a couple items that we need to move and add. And the first is, we want to recognize the resignation of Mike Guston and thank him for his years of service on the board. And the board has, we need a motion to appoint Maria Ruggillo to fill Mike Guston's seat. Can we have a motion?
You're going to change the agenda? So moved.
Thank you. In a second. Okay. And further, we would like to appoint Maria Ruggillo to fill Mike Guston's seat. May we have a motion for that?
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Welcome, Maria. If you'll join me, I have the oath of office for you.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member Webster Boy of Education according to the best amendment.
Can you break it down? I'm sorry.
Could you pass that down, please? Okay. Yes. Okay, our next order of business is visitor speaking time. The Board of Education invites the public to comment on matters regarding the school district. The public comments section of the meeting is a time for the Board of Education to listen. As a courtesy, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Comments naming specific personnel should be addressed privately or in writing to the Board in order to protect individuals' rights. And matters that would infringe upon student privacy will not be addressed in this public forum. With that being said, is there anyone present who would like to address the Board? Thank you very much. And as we continue, we want to recognize our liaisons that are here this evening. Do we have Stacy? And Allison? Please join us. Our central PTSA co-presidents, Stacy Peters and Allison Fettig Featherly. Thank you very much for being here.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Happy September.
It's busy so far.
So we had our first meeting last night, and it was very full. We went over, which we don't normally like to do. We like to keep it tight. But we haven't seen each other in a while, so we did have a big meeting. What we're passing around are our proposed goals for 2018-2019. We will vote on these at our October PTSA meeting. And they will look fairly familiar from last year. We are going to have a continued focus on building partnerships. And we have done, over last year, we've done a lot, but there's still some areas that we want to branch out into a little more fully. So if you look under the first one, you'll see those four bullet points. And those are things, areas that we really want to emphasize and focus this year in our partnerships. So to continue what we did last year and then branch out and build additional partnerships. The second thing that we had in our list of goals last year, and feel like we kind of marginally met, we didn't really deliver on our full vision in that place. So we brought that one back as well. We're going to focus on programming. So we did another survey last year. We had great feedback from our membership of families and staff who participated. And we're going to use that feedback to drive what programming we're going to bring forth this year. So there'll be more on that front. So we're really turning up the dial, and our emphasis is going to be on what can we do to bring more in. And the last one is a pretty standard goal that we have every year about advocacy and well-representing Webster at the regional, the state, and the national level. And our last phrase at the end of the tenure as presidents, we would like to see more people smile when they hear the acronym PTSA and know the value PTSA brought to their educational experience here. So that is the same as last year as well. This is our last year as presidents. So we are actively looking out for opportunities to bring people along this year that can take over next year.
We're kind of ready. We're full-on ready for this year. We've made some great partnerships, and we thank all of you for always being so supportive and open with all of us. And, you know, just that connection and stuff, it's invaluable. And we're very excited with really partnering with the WTA this year and doing some great programming there and really boosting the PTSA's presence in the secondary school this year because there's such a need for our students, no matter if they're seven or 17. So we're really trying to key in on everything all around, but a special focus on the secondary students.
We will be out to see all the building principals. But one of the big changes this year is although we've been in the seat for a year now, our executive team at the central level has turned over quite significantly. You'll see a lot of familiar faces. They're just taking on new roles. So we have, we're going to have a few growing pains this first month as we kind of gel and figure out how we're going to work together, as any new group will do. But after that, I think you'll really feel our presence more strongly.
Yeah, we're very excited. We have a lot of great chairs at all the buildings. So we think it's going to be a really awesome year, so.
Yeah, that is really good news. We have leadership at every building right now, which is a great way to start out a year.
Very important, yeah.
And this is a great time to talk about PTSA calendars and membership that support your work.
That's right. Thank you. We are in the midst of our membership drive. We're selling calendars. The calendars this year, they're only $5, and you buy them, and all the money just goes right to your school this year. So it's not going to, you know, filter through Central and stuff. And we are taking the cost this year, so definitely do that. And the cards are $10, and lots of great discounts this year at Shute's, Yolickity. I don't know. I can't think of all of them.
It's listed on the back of the card.
It's listed on the back of the card. Yeah, the plastic card. You got it, Mike?
We're all card-carrying members, yes.
So we also are selling at Hegedorn's. That money is going back to Central for the calendars at Hegedorn's. So if you're out shopping and you want that money to go to your school, hang tight and buy the calendar from your school.
And I think already we're almost at 400 memberships. I think we got a number. Is it? So we're doing good so far.
I don't know about calendars at schools, because they're doing them as their own separate fundraisers, but we've already gone through a full box of 100 calendars at Hegedorn's already, so. It's going.
Yeah.
And they're nice. They're glossy this year.
They're beautiful, yeah. And of course showcasing all the students' art, so thank you.
Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. We look forward to being at the central PTSA meetings as well as the liaison relationships we have with all the elementary and secondary schools. And thank you very much for your effort.
Thank you.
Attending so many meetings. I'm so impressed. Last year that you got around to every school and every event. That was most every event. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. It's definitely made a difference, and I think the connection. And we're looking forward to meeting the new principals at some of the schools this year too, so it'll be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And next we have our Webster Teachers Association Representative, Sue Bjarner. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
So it's Allison and Stacy's last year, and it's my first time here. So I'm happy to be representing WTA. I know a lot of you. I'm a lifelong Webster resident and graduate of Webster High School. And my grandfather was a bus driver. My grandmother and my mom were secretaries at Clem South. My own kids graduated from here, so I've been in Webster schools for a long, long time. And just a few things to share from the Webster Teachers Association. The first thing is that we were really excited. This summer was the first time that WTA participated in the Fireman's Parade. And so there was a lot of excitement seeing the kids and their families. And I think the biggest thing that we realized is that next year we need to bring more candy to the parade. The second really big positive kickoff for this year is that a lot of our buildings, the buildings that were available, we did meet and greets with the kids at elementary level and curriculum nights before the school year began. And that's been very well received by the families to be able to get in ahead of time and meet the teachers and become familiar with the buildings. And a lot of the other buildings are doing it right tonight, very early in the school year. So that's a positive thing that we hear from the families. The third thing, like Allison and Stacy had said, is that WTA is very happy now to be partnering with the PTSA. We're going to be working with them on some workshops to support parents, just to have that positive relationship to strengthen the engagement with our families. And then the last thing, we just wanted to always formally invite all of our building representatives to come in and meet with all of us from the Board. We like to see your faces. And we will be formally sending out invitations to the representatives to visit each building. And as many of you are able to come, that we always appreciate that. So that's all we have tonight.
Thank you so much. Next, we have our student liaisons. We have Sam Stacy from Thomas. Is Sam here? Okay. Grace Parmley from Schrader. Welcome, Grace.
I'm just kind of giving notes.
Okay. If you just want to share some updates and some notes, that's perfect.
Your name tag is in blue, up to your right.
Okay. I'm Grace Parmley. I am a senior at Webster Schrader. I'm a part of sports clubs, and I take a lot of leadership roles. For the start of the school year, everyone has been settling in well. The freshmen seem to be adjusting very well. Our link orientation for the freshmen was on August 28th, and we have some events for them coming up. We have a kickball game tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:00. We have about 90 link crew leaders and about 350 freshmen. So we, there's about 40 groups, so each one has about 10 to 12 to take care of. Sports this year, we've been off to a good start. We did have to cancel some practice yesterday due to heat, but today we're back to normal. Everything, every practice was held. We've had our junior and senior class meetings already. They took place yesterday and today. We provided class information, so they're off to a good start. Marching band is preparing for their competition season. They've been practicing at Webster Schrader. Our Clubs and Activities Fair is being held next week during lunches, so students can look at clubs and different activities that they may want to join. Juniors have been signing up for their PSATs, and that's great. And our open house is Monday, September 24th at 5:30. Homecoming is going to be the week after Columbus Day, so I believe that's October 9th. It's not. It's actually against Canandaigua. It's Friday night. October 12th is the game.
But it's the weekend at Columbus Day?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Next, on our agenda is a celebration, which I suspect most of you are here for. The Webster Retired Educators Association presents outstanding citizenship awards to students each year. And Craig Pratt, if you would join us and tell us a little bit about all these outstanding kids.
See some familiar faces? Each year there's less probably. As I enter my 22nd year of retirement, I think it is now, whatever. I was noticing all the new teachers downstairs today, and quite a few this year. And I was thinking back to a century ago, my first day. I'm sure theirs was different than mine, because I started in Santa Claus. My principal said, "I have, we'll go to the general meeting. I'm going back to the school. How about I meet you at the country club, and we played 18 holes of golf?" It's a nice beginning, so. The W, our citizenship award is now, we just finished the 16th year. The annual award in each building goes to a student based on service, scholarship, leadership, and sportsmanship. They are chosen by 5th grade teachers as well as other faculty members. And we're going to start off with, we'll go alphabetically, and we'll start off with DeWitt Road. And that will be Deb Beckman Heim.
Good evening. I'm Deb Beckman Heim, retiree from Willink. And I am pleased to announce the award winner for DeWitt Road School. Is DeWitt Road Elementary School's WREA Citizenship Award winner. Maren Bedford embodies all aspects of the district's cooperation, accountability, respect, and excellence care initiative, and is a positive role model for the Webster community. She encourages, inspires others to do and be their best self. She has a passion for learning, relishes a challenge, and has a strong drive, which have led to great academic success. Maren was a member of the DeWitt Safety Patrol and the PBIS Student Leadership Team. As part of this team, she helped to identify ways to build a stronger school community and collaborated with other members of the team to plan and support initiatives within DeWitt. She was chosen by her peers as a role model for the school, where she volunteers to help younger students and is involved in intramurals, chorus, art club, orchestra, and Ridge Runners. Also, this past year she was a leader in DeWitt's Food Drive and Hat and Mittens Drive and collaborated with others to help raise money for Water for South Sudan. Outside of school, Maren plays for Lakefront Soccer, swims with the Blue Fins, volunteers for Making Spirits Bright, hosts an annual summer lemonade stand to raise money for Lollipop Farm, and is a student at the Center for Talented Youth through Johns Hopkins. Congratulations, Maren.
Liaison from each school will present the recipient with their certificate and special PIN.
When we're all done with all seven announcements, all seven award winners will come up here, and we'll tweet out a picture. Okay? Because that's what everyone really wants. They want a selfie with me, so.
Next will be Clem North. But I need to add that after this, we're out of here, folks, we will be having a reception downstairs in the west cafeteria. So if you go down the stairs and go that way, you go past the east cafeteria. In the west cafeteria, we have just some ice cream and cookies and so forth and so forth. So you're welcome, but I know you're working, so whatever. Next is Clem North, and would Jane Carey please stand? Jane Carey is Clem Road North School's Citizenship Award winner. Jane excels in the classroom and in the Webster community. She spent the year as a kindergarten bus safety and enriching young students for the last two years as a peer tutor. Jane is quick to lend a helping hand to fellow classmates if they are confused on a concept being taught or if they drop their supplies. She works well with classmates through various projects like Maker Mondays in the school, library, and literature groups in the classroom. She includes everyone in play and group work, giving encouragement and compliments throughout the day. Throughout her 5th grade year, Jane puts in extra time with her instrument and participated in the Fall and Spring Solo Fest, Community Arts Day, and pit band for Mrs. Dubois's Class Play. Within the community, Jane has participated in drama kids and is a member of the Blue Fins Swim Team. Her passion for helping the homeless is evident. She spends time helping to clean and set up temporary housing for them and serves them meals in an area shelter. Jane plus others, first in everything from donating gifts to those in need, to helping peers in the classroom, to helping adults throughout the school with tasks. Congratulations.
All right, I'm here to talk about my newfound friend, Jayden Concordia, excuse me. Jayden's winner is highly involved in her school. She's including participating in orchestra, chorus, and Safety Patrol. Outside of school, she is in dance and gymnastics. She gives her best in all subject areas, asking for help or to make corrections to raise her score. She is diligent, careful, and focused in all subject areas and on every paper and project. Jayden demonstrates leadership abilities in a variety of class and school activities, encouraging other students to do the right thing and to push themselves to do their very best. People want to be around her because she is good, kind, and inspires other students to be the same. Jayden treats classmates with fairness, generosity, and courtesy, whether they are in the classroom or on the playground. She is one of the first to volunteer to help someone else who needs assistance and is a role model for others. And just a little bit, I've gotten to know Jayden. I know she is most deserving of this award. Congratulations, Jayden.
Hi, I'm Andrea David, and I'm representing Plank North. I'd like to invite Jocelyn Gudica to stand up. Hey, I'm saying your last name right now. Okay. Plank North Elementary School's winner is Jocelyn Gudica. Not only is she a model student, but she also goes above and beyond on a daily basis to be kind and helpful to everyone. She demonstrates the district's essential skills on a daily basis and sees the value in advancing her learning. She is dependable, courteous, respectful, responsible, and kind to others. Jocelyn is positive, compassionate, a positive role model, and a natural leader who encourages her peers to never give up and always do their best. Jocelyn is dedicated to her learning, participating in the lesson, and putting forth 100% effort in everything she does. She pushes herself above and beyond to further her understanding. At Plank North, Jocelyn was willing to take on any extra challenges to further her learning in a variety of areas, including orchestra, Battle of the Books, Math Olympiad, intramurals, art club, learning showcase, and flag raiser slash announcer. Outside of school, she is actively involved in the Lakefront Soccer and the Rochester Football Club. She participated in Solo Fest, attends religion classes, and is an altar server in her church. Oops, sorry. Congratulations, Jocelyn.
I'm Dennis Coon. Could Ava Capp teen please stand? I was a teacher at Plank South for 20-some years, and I want you to know this is exciting now as it was when I was a classroom teacher. Ava Capp teen, Plank South Elementary School's winner, exemplifies what it means to be a good citizen in her school community. She is an admirable, patient, and caring student who loves to help others. Not only is she compassionate, thoughtful, and respectful to all adults and peers, but she is also the kind of person who notices when others are in need of assistance before anyone else is even aware. She immediately helps without hesitation and does so without expectation of a reward or a need for acknowledgement. Ava is the epitome of integrity, doing the right thing even when no one else is watching. Her teachers describe her as a good student and positive role, kind-hearted, and a friend to all who never shies away from helping anyone. She has a sweet, quiet way when working with younger students, demonstrates care behaviors day in and day out, and makes positive contributions to the classroom and school community. Congratulations, Ava.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy Foster, and I represent Schlegel Road School. Molly, would you please stand up? Schlegel Road Elementary School's Citizenship Award winner is Molly Swingy, a true role model at her school. She consistently puts forth her best effort in all that she does and works extremely hard to demonstrate the care attributes and essential skills. She begins each day with a positive mindset and a smile on her face. She is a self-motivated learner, a leader, and a compassionate friend. Molly goes out of her way to make sure everyone feels welcome and included. She takes such pride in her academics and has a strong work ethic and effective collaboration skills that help her support the learning of others. Molly is an active participant in her school and community. At school, she participates in safety, band, Solo Fest, chorus, and art club. She enjoys cooking dinner for her family multiple times a week and participates in a program through Compassion International, where she writes letters to her pen pal who lives in Kenya. In addition, Molly plays on the Rochester Ladies Lions softball team and continuously demonstrates her sportsmanship on the field. Thank you, Molly.
I'm Maureen Johnson, representing State Road. Would Sarah Koleli please stand up? Sarah is State Road Elementary School's Award winner, and she exemplifies all the qualities of a great leader. She is someone who stands out to peers as a person who can be trusted, a person to look to when in need. Sarah raises the bar for the people around her but never shows judgment and is consistently willing to put her peers first. She is genuinely kind and takes every opportunity to show leadership. She was a member of State's Eagle Express Post Office and Safety Patrol, a care ambassador, and voted team captain for State Road Track and Field Days. Sarah is driven to achieve and gives every task her best effort, whether it is learning something new and challenging, playing her flute in band, or pushing herself as a Ridge Runner. She is a person who leaves an impact on everyone around her. Congratulations to Sarah and to all of our winners tonight.
It really is the most wonderful time of the year. I love it when our students come back to school. You can see some of our, hopefully you can see some of our back-to-school pictures now. Here they are. And what great joy our students and teachers experienced this week despite a very steamy start to the year. You just had the opportunity to meet seven of our outstanding elementary students, and these are the kinds of young people I have the pleasure of interacting with each day. In addition to these seven, I have more than 8,400 reasons why I truly have the best job in the world. Our students, along with 1,500 amazing faculty and staff, make up our One Webster District. I had the pleasure of opening the year with our faculty and staff the week before school started, about eight days ago. I shared with them a new way of looking at the three Rs of education: relationships, resilience, and reflection. That's not to say that our schools take any focus off of reading, writing, and arithmetic. These three Rs, relationships, resilience, and reflection, simply reinforce all that we do as a district guided by our vision of compassionately connected, joyfully engaged, and always learning. I want to talk a little bit about our website. I'd like to remind our families that there is a page available under the Board of Education tab with valuable information regarding the school's start time change that the board approved during its August 14 meeting. Remember, the start time does not change until next September, 12 months from now. Please remember that the later, oh, please remember that the later start times begin next fall in 2019. There is a new Frequently Asked Questions link on that webpage along with information on the science behind the start time change and the community forums that were held over the past year to discuss the change. Our district will continue to provide updates and information as we plan for that transition all year long. Another important initiative that the board approved moving forward with at its last meeting was a proposed $69.5 million capital improvement project. A potential December 11 vote date for our One Webster community will be decided upon by the board later tonight. And more information will be available on our website early next week regarding changes and improvements that will touch all 11 of our school buildings and the district's transportation department. I'm looking forward to sharing more about this exciting project in the coming months. Lastly, a quick reminder about all the ways that we try to communicate with our families. Be sure to visit our website, websterschools.org, for up-to-date information on each of our schools, news stories, a staff directory, department information, calendar, breakfast and lunch menus, and so much more. It's also a great idea to follow us on all of our social media platforms: Facebook, Twitter. The district handle is @WCSDproud, and you can also follow me at SuperWebsterCSD. And the district also has a YouTube channel, @WebsterSchoolsProud. You will receive regular newsletters and e-newsletters from each building principal along with district-wide newsletters mailed to you throughout the year. Families should also watch for important district-wide messages from the Infinite Campus Parent and Student Portal. At this time of the year, there's so much information to be aware of. Please make use of these communication tools to help us all stay connected as we begin another school year together, and that ends my report. Tam?
Thank you very much. Now, as we move on to board business, our new business is Centered on the New York State School Board Association Voting Delegate, and we have two people attending, Jan Streggi and David Metzger, both attending the conference. The resolutions have been sent out, and I can read forward to you or we can discuss, and I don't know if you're able to stay and represent Webster as a voting delegate for the conference.
I haven't made transportation arrangements, but I can make them so that it works out.
So that's the page following in our packet, so we can discuss and confirm them. Next, we have the Capital Project Proposal Resolution, and Brian is going to update us?
So what you have before you is a resolution to pretty much set the ballot for December 11th. It outlines the proposition, pretty much generally stating what we plan on doing, and the notice and when do we have to have a hearing, what the exact wording of the proposition is, and it requires a roll call vote. So you'll see what you're approving tonight will also show up on the ballot December 11th.
Are there any questions? Okay, this does require a roll call vote, and we can start. Maria, I'm not sure if you're comfortable voting. It's entirely...
Tammy, we need a motion to...
You have a motion.
Okay. Can we please have a motion to accept the resolution for the Capital Project?
I'll make that motion, Tammy.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Or no? Okay, motion carries.
And then you do the roll call vote.
And Cindy, oh, thank you.
Mike Saffalato?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, the SEACER Resolution?
Yep, that's the, what that is, is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We have to notify anytime we do a public works project, notify all the interesting governmental parties, and so this is just, the board is acting as the lead agency, that there's nothing historical, there's nothing, no major environmental impact that any of the work we're doing to our buildings will have around us. So that's, this is the resolution that's required for us to do this as part of the project.
And so can we have a motion to accept the SEACER Type 1 Resolution for the Capital Project?
I'll make that motion, Tammy.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Or no? Okay, motion carries.
And then you do the roll call vote.
And Cindy, oh, thank you.
Mike Saffalato?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, the SEACER Resolution?
Yep, that's the, what that is, is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We have to notify anytime we do a public works project, notify all the interesting governmental parties, and so this is just, the board is acting as the lead agency, that there's nothing historical, there's nothing, no major environmental impact that any of the work we're doing to our buildings will have around us. So that's, this is the resolution that's required for us to do this as part of the project.
And so can we have a motion to accept the SEACER Type 1 Resolution for the Capital Project? So moved by Dave, and a second by Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call for this one as well.
As well, okay.
Mike Saffalato?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then finally, the resolution approving the purchase contract.
Correct, so this is pretty much a real estate agreement between us and the town of Webster to transfer upon voter approval ownership of Basket Road to the Webster Central School District.
And may we have a motion to accept the resolution approving the purchase contract?
So moved.
I'll second that.
By Jan, second by Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Is this a roll call vote?
No.
Okay, we're good. Okay, motion carries.
Tam?
I'm sorry.
Not everyone voted yet.
I'm sorry. Any no votes?
Me.
Dave, in abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have the Professional Development Plan, and Brian Neenan is here to talk to us about that.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm here just to talk for a couple minutes. I'm actually a trailer. So on November 1st, our instructional report will be on professional development, and so I'm here just to tell you a few little tidbits, and I'll try to keep it brief. I think Carm gave me just, what, seven minutes, Carm, or 10 minutes? Three, okay. So, but one of the things we want to highlight is last year, we embarked upon a journey of what you guys probably heard many times as FLIP, Flipped Opportunities for Professional Development. Stands for Flexible Learning Plan is what we use the acronym for that. And what this does is it really has given and allowed for teacher voice. It's empowered teachers as leaders of others' learning but also their own learning. It connects directly to our Board of Education goals, our district initiatives, and certainly our vision as well. And it was a huge success last year, and we are doing it again this year, again by mutual agreement that we worked out with the WTA, so there was another MOU in place for that. TTT, Teachers Teach Teachers, it's our superintendence conference day, it's October 5th, and it's back again. This is our fourth iteration of this, and it's, again, one of our favorite days of the year, again, teachers teaching teachers. And where we started, it was the first time that this idea came about, there were about 75 presenters. We are going to be over 150. We have 155 different presenters at this year's TTT, and one of the things that a lot of them are doing too is we've got more people to present. I think last year's FLIP opportunities helped that, but there's a couple situations where people are co-presenting, but a lot of people also found out that they didn't want to present at all three sessions, they wanted to present at one session but then be able to attend to other possessions, which is a great balance. But again, it's certainly a testament that we've got 155 different people presenting, and we have 100, over 120 different sessions. So again, great day, and we would also, on behalf of Carm and myself, we'd love to invite the board to stop by that day and enjoy that day and partake in that day with us. So it's a great way to learn and grow together. Kate and Greg will be telling you more about our Professional Learning Development Plan, but the one thing that I will tell you as the trailer is that last year, it was a focus for us as a district. And through that focus, we offered, we more than doubled our professional learning opportunities in our district, and I would say that it was certainly one of the highlights of success from last year, and by, through their leadership that really a lot of that happened. The other thing that we really began a lot more last year than we have done in the last few years is professional learning for all of our administrators as well. So while our teachers are learning, we are also focusing on being pointed with what our administrative team is learning as well. So that's been great. You're going to hear in November, a lot about the new teacher induction program. Dave Swinson and myself and Kate and Greg and Erica Ebert have all worked hard on revamping that, and we're off to our first year of that new induction program, and it's been great. And again, they'll focus more on that and tell you more there. And then lastly, I just want to remind everyone that about four years ago, we started to, in each of our instructional reports, we will embed what professional learning opportunities are happening for that department that is presenting and also any curriculum writing. So you're going to see that continue, not just on November 1st. We'll hit some highlights and give you some different information, but then we will be giving you a lot more as the year goes on and progresses. Okay? Any questions that I can entertain tonight?
Thanks, Brian.
Look forward to November 1st.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Yes. Thank you, Brian.
That we certify the plan?
Sorry.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No? Abstain. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to board reports, we have our school liaison reports, which I'm sure everyone's looking forward to attending upcoming PTSA meetings. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? We all have upcoming dates.
I'll start.
Okay.
I'm going to be the representative for Schlegel Road School this year. Our first event, I believe, is this Friday. Tomorrow is the annual Patriot Party. It's really a get-to-know-you and a place to reconnect for all the students and parents. There's going to be a band, and I believe popcorn and a bounce house, and it should be a lot of fun. Starts at 5 o'clock tomorrow. And a what?
A dunk tank.
A dunk tank, oh, are we, who are we?
Is there a certain person that's going to be dunked?
Me?
No.
I'm selling calendars after that.
You're selling calendars, okay. And the first PTSA meeting is September 18th, which is a Tuesday, and a new time this year. I don't know how all the times look, I haven't been able to check that out yet, but this particular meeting is going to be at 4 o'clock on the 18th. So, and that's all I have today. Thank you.
I'm going to be at Clem North again, and I'm happy to be there. We have now had our first PTSA meeting, but it will continue to be on Monday nights. I'm not sure if it's the 10th or the 17th, but it'll be Monday nights, and I'm looking forward to it.
I'll be at Plank North. We've not had a meeting yet.
I'm going to be at Dewitt, but I haven't, don't have anything right now, except that the new playground is awesome.
At Clem South, there's a kindergarten playground social this Saturday from 11 until noon. Their first PTSA meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 26th at 6:30. Woolink will be having a book fair all next week. They'll be celebrating a back-to-school bash on Friday, September 21st, featuring a food truck rodeo with live music from 6 to 8. Surprise having an open house next week on Wednesday for their 7th and 8th graders, and Surprise Book Fair goes from September 25th through September 28th.
And I'm going to be at Plank South, and their first PTSA meeting is next Thursday. I won't be able to be there because we have a workshop, but I will reach out to Jen and Scott and their PTSA leaders and get all the information I can. I know that they are looking right now for kindergarten help in the cafeteria through the month, so if anybody is wanting to get in there, they could use that.
And I'll be at State Road this year. That will be a change from Dewitt. The first PTSA meeting is September 18th, so I look forward to being there and meeting everyone at State Road. Thank you. And then next, we have the Monroe County School Boards Association, the Steering Committee. Mike, I'll let you talk about...
I'll talk about a lot of things right now. If you can recall, school safety was and probably, it is, it still is a big issue. And as president of MCSBA, I wrote an editorial for our newsletter about school safety last year, and since there's limited funds from the government, I strongly suggested that we first address the issue of mental health before putting any efforts into arming our staff as a solution to gun violence. So at your spot, you have two of the position papers. One is supporting the emotional well-being of students, which I'll talk about first. These position papers are actually written to influence county, state, and federal legislators and officials, and our purpose is to try to inform and advocate for a particular purpose. So just remember, we're writing this for an audience. We're not writing it for you particularly, we're writing it for officials and legislators. So when we were first looking at our school safety issue, we decided that it would be best to break it into two parts, and the first, again, is the supporting the emotional well-being of students. You have the draft in front of you. There is increased concern regarding the significant number of students who are scoring high on the Adverse Childhood Experience Assessment, which is known as ACEs. Therefore, MCSBA is recommending that we support increased mental health funding and grant opportunities for the mental health awareness, for teacher training, and for coordinating services to families in crisis. And if you look at the back section, we provided a number of data points for our legislators and officials to look at. I personally feel that this draft is, with the exception of a little bit more of wording, is ready to go. So I'd like you to take a look at it. The superintendents will be looking at it, I believe, Friday. I'll be asking the board presidents to look at it, and once the board presidents look at it, I'm going to be asking each of the boards to look at it, but you got to head start since I'm in that role. The second one is about keeping our schools safe and secure. There is presently some disagreement about the wording on this paper. I'll be quite honest. We all agree that safety is our number-one priority, but how we achieve that is still up to a debate. Just as you have the national level, it's being politicized. I'm hoping that we can keep it from being politicized here, but it's turning out to be somewhat of a political situation. The one thing that I am adamant about is the fact that I believe school districts are in the best position to make decisions about security, so any federal or state legislation should allow for local control and should contain flexible spending parameters. So that is one thing that I hope this draft kind of makes clear. You may want to take a look at it. Again, everybody has a different opinion on this. I personally am... Just as you have the national level, it's being politicized. I'm hoping that we can keep it from being politicized here, but it's turning out to be somewhat of a political situation. The one thing that I am adamant about is the fact that I believe school districts are in the best position to make decisions about security. So any federal or state legislation should allow for local control and should contain flexible spending parameters. So that is one thing that I hope this draft kind of makes clear. You may want to take a look at it, again, everybody has a different opinion on this. I personally am strongly opposed to arming teachers, but that's not quite a majority opinion yet. But take a look at it. And there's a bunch of facts also on the back for data points. And we hope to have this ready for our legislators for our December trip. So again, these are draft forms and, again, we're working on it.
So are you looking for input?
Yes, I'm looking for input.
And we provide that to you?
Yes, yes.
And this is the December trip to Albany?
Correct.
Okay.
We want a position paper to provide to our Senators and our Assembly, the Governor, the whole bit, FCD. Also, as you're aware, our district, as many of the other school districts, depend upon BOSIs for a variety of programs and services. And it's been 15 years since the district superintendent's salary cap has been updated. And there is proposed legislation presently that would update this cap. However, it needs the Governor's signature. And we've been asked, if you remember, the Governor actually is the one that capped the salaries. So we've been asked as a component district of Monroe, Number 1 BOSIs, to support legislation by writing the Governor, urging him to support this legislation. And all you have to do is sign the letter and we'll be all set. That's my report from MCSBA.
Thank you, Mike, for all your efforts. Next is the Legislative Committee and Jan will be...
Well, that was, that basically was, we spent the whole afternoon working on that.
Working on the position papers, okay. Labor Relations, Linda.
The first meeting is on the 19th, so I will be able to go to that.
Incidentally, we've been asking for topics and one of the topics that was suggested was mentoring and induction, right Dave? All right, so we'll bring that one up.
Okay, next.
I'll submit it.
Next is Information Exchange, I am the co-chair of that, and their first topic is September 12th, Act for Education. So as we develop the topics throughout the year, we'll share them and anybody's welcome to attend. You don't need to be part of the committee, all you need to do is RSVP. And it's a great committee, I've enjoyed being part of that. Next is the Executive Committee, myself...
We're meeting next Wednesday.
And Carmen, okay. And the first meeting that we had talked about a leadership symposium, and it's the first of three events where superintendents and board presidents across the county interact. And we had different scenarios where we had to talk about what we would do and why, and talked about different leadership styles, emotional and left-brain, right-brain exercises. So we look forward to the next one. We had fun.
We did.
We did. Okay. Do you want to add anything to that?
Nope.
Okay. Our standing district committees, Audit Committee, is Mike Saffaletto and Sue Casey.
Nothing to report yet.
We'll have one coming up at the end of the month.
And Policy as well, yes. I can see the excitement.
I was thinking we would probably have our first meeting in October. It's Dave and Jan and myself and over there. Are you guys amenable to having the meetings prior to our meetings? Does that work? So Cindy, if you want to send out an email for availability for, you know, the meetings in October, people can chime in and, you know, time isn't really of the essence, we don't wait till the last minute to do these things, so we're pretty flexible. This year, we are going to be reviewing the Community Relations Policies, those are the 2000s, as well as the District Operations, which are the 4000s. And of course, there's a few that we have that we do annually and anything new that comes up, we'll be addressing and there may be a few holdovers from last year. So that's what we'll be doing, we're probably going to have three, four meetings. I'm sorry, Maria, that you didn't have the opportunity to volunteer to be on this committee, but we can only have three people. Maybe next year, you can put your bid in.
You know, there's only two, I'm glad.
Well, next is Budget and we all get to share there. So typically, we rotate through, so when that time of year becomes available. Strategic Planning, Sue, I know, do you want to speak to that? We've just scheduled...
Yeah, we just scheduled a brief meeting on September 13th, next Thursday, prior to our Board Meeting or our Board Workshop. It's at 5:45 and we're just going to have a, you know, figure out what we're doing this year. Just a couple updates, well, they were, I think you covered them both, probably in your report. The Start Times Q&amp;A on the website, as well as the Transition Teams that will be working for implementation of the Start Times, will start meeting in October. So that's the update there.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have the items of our Consent Agenda and Superintendent recommends approval of the minutes of our August 2nd Retreat, August 14th Regular Meeting, Personnel Actions Committee and Special Education Meetings, and recommendations of the Committee and Preschool Special Education Meetings. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any no votes? Abstentions? So noted. Motion carries. Our next scheduled meeting is September 13th, Workshop, where we will study Legos and math expressions. So thank you, everyone, for your attention. And then we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Linda, second by Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried, thank you.